Hello, School Board members. Thank you for taking the time to review the information we're sharing with you today on student policy and student services. I'm Stephanie Leonard, and I will be joined in this presentation by Janet Thomas and Bridget Katarck. The three of us are representing the Teaching, Learning, and Equity Team as our team works collaboratively to ensure that our learning environments are conducive to learning for all students, as well as to minimize disruptive behaviors in those learning environments. I'm excited this evening to share with you things that we're doing that are like nowhere else or like no one else, as well as to identify opportunities for improvement with respect to student services and school operations and student policy, all in service of our district vision, mission, and core values. The agenda for our presentation tonight is as follows. I'll begin by sharing the board accountability measures to which the board holds the administrative team accountable. OE 10 and OE 11 are the processes that the admin team ensures are in place, and SR3 and the district insight scorecards are the results measures to which the board holds the administration accountable. I'll discuss the alignment with the instructional framework and practice profiles, and I'll give you an overview of the TLE district-wide behavioral data review processes. Janet will share the roles and responsibilities of the Student Services professionals. She'll discuss social-emotional learning within the curriculum renewal and design process and school-based mental health services. Bridget will discuss the role and responsibility of the Director of Student Policy and School Operations, and she'll touch on school safety, student discipline, and student policy. I'll close the presentation, sharing staff survey feedback, discuss the financial investment we make in the work of learning environments that are conducive to engaging instruction and positive behaviors. And as always, we appreciate the school board asking what they can do to support our work. Some of that will be shared with you throughout the presentation, and I'll reiterate some of those requests as I close out our work today. The first operational expectation related to student policy, school operations, and student services is the Operational Expect 10: Learning Environment. When we reviewed the outline provided by the school board to the Teaching, Learning, and Equity Team, there were two major areas of focus: the learning environment and student behaviors, both of those through the lens of student services and student policy and school operation. So the first operational expectation related to those topic areas in the outline is OE 10, which ensures we have processes in place to ensure we have a learning environment conducive to engaging all students. We presented this to the school board on August 26. I've relinked the presentation, should you like to review it again. At that time, we were found as in compliance with all of our processes in place for ensuring our learning environment meets expectations. Most specifically, 10.1, 10.2, 10.4, 10.5, and 10.6 have the closest alignment with the topics of safe learning environments and managing student behaviors. The second operational expectation is Instructional Programming, or OE 11. That too was presented on August 26, and we were found to be in compliance in ensuring that we had processes in place for instructional programming. Specifically, I'd like to focus on 11.2, 11.3, 11.5, and 11.6. These focus on engaging, relevant, and culturally responsive teaching and learning, which in turn ensures that we have safe classrooms and decreases behaviors that are unwanted in a classroom when students are engaged. 11.6 is our effort and our work that we need to strategically engage in to try and interrupt or disrupt the outcomes that have inequitable opportunities for our students of color, our students with special needs, our multilingual learners, and our students that live at or below the poverty line. Our work in these processes are to understand why we have disparate outcomes and to change the adult actions that lead to those disparate outcomes. The first two accountability measures I shared with you were processes that we put in place to promulgate the kinds of environments we'd need to ensure all students learn well and safely. The next few slides are on how we measure the outcomes of that work. Student Result Policy 3 is most closely aligned to the work of classroom environment and student behaviors. We shared this with the school board on September 23, 2024, and we were deemed at that point to have made reasonable progress, with exceptions noted. I'd specifically draw your attention to the three bullets that are important areas of SR3. We want to work to gain the necessary social-emotional and life skills for our students to be successful in school, community, and beyond. We want to help our learners grow as future-focused and skilled in long-range goal-setting for education, college, careers, and life, and we want to support our learners in participating in activities and experiences in and out of the classroom that prepare them to engage and thrive in our diverse community. As a reminder, the Student Result Policy 3, which shows the outcomes related to SEL and behavior, is linked here for your review. I did a screen grab of one school's data to show how we analyze behavioral data by school. So if you click into the link "Student Result Policy 3 Outcomes," you'll be able to access district-wide behavioral data and then site-by-site behavioral data, and you can see that it is aggregated and then disaggregated and measured in risk ratios, so we can quickly identify at the district and site level the areas or focus groups on which we need to plan specific strategies to try and change the outcomes that are disparate through our problems of practice. The second outcome measure to which the board holds our team accountable are the district scorecards. You can see in 2324, we have a lot of secondary data that we're bringing forward related to behaviors and social-emotional learning. We also have social-emotional learning information indicated on this scorecard for elementary students. As a reminder, the work of restorative practices and restorative justice in education started at the middle level, rolled up, and then expanded down to the elementary schools. So you'll note, as you look at this scorecard, we made really strong progress in increasing the frequency of restorative practices across our secondary levels. Those are the levels that are far enough along within the implementation process for us to begin to measure that information. We did make nice progress at the elementary school and at the high schools last year with decreasing out-of-school suspensions and in-school suspensions related to behavioral errors. We have some work that we need to continue to do at the middle school level. We continue to measure for the classroom environments that are conducive to building community and a culture of care through an RJ walkthrough tool at the secondary level, as well as the responsive classroom assessment at the elementary level. You can take a look at that data here, and if you'd like, you can dig into the district, department, and site scorecards that are linked there below, which has this information by department as well as by site. We'll be measuring similar outcomes for the 2425 school year. So you can see, we are aggregating the results of our SEL competency surveys. We're continuing to measure students who have not had an out-of-school or in-school suspension in our effort to decrease exclusionary discipline and to increase restorative practices. And every site and operational department has a problem of practice that is in place and will be monitored and measured throughout the year. The work related to classroom environment, student behavior, and school policy mostly lines under the theme of environment within the instructional framework. We've been implementing the culture of care and the disrupting inequity in rigorous and coherent teaching for the past three years. If you take a moment to click into the practice profiles, you can look at the expected and unacceptable language for adult behaviors in each of these areas. Specifically, within culture of care, we talk about adult expected behaviors to ensure there's a space between adults in our schools and students that are conducive to building a culture of care, which in turn leads to safe and productive learning environments. So I'd invite you to just take a moment to take a look at those practice profiles as our high-confidence strategy to ensure that we're building classroom environments that are conducive to learning with behaviors that allow all to learn. Finally, for this portion of the presentation, I'll just give a brief overview of our district-wide data review schedule for Teaching, Learning, and Equity. Every year, we examine these data points on this timeline. We begin and end the year with the district data playbooks, which is inclusive of behavior data, both at the district and site level. Those data playbooks are put together by our technology team, our accountability team led by Robin Gardner, along with school psychologists at every site, so that we're analyzing district-level data aggregated and disaggregated, as well as site-level data aggregated and disaggregated. The Teaching, Learning, and Equity Team does data and attendance review at the end of first quarter. We do attendance review at the end of second quarter or semester. We look at third grade reading, eighth grade math, special education referrals, as well as discipline referrals, expulsions, and suspensions, and then we review that information again at the end of June. The Teaching, Learning, and Equity Team follows a data review protocol, which I'll share here. The data is gathered, again, by Robin Gardner, and we look at the variety of data as a team. We examine for positive trends. We look at trends in need of further examination, and then we prioritize action steps for TLE leaders to undertake with our site leaders to change whatever processes we're seeing that need interrupted because we're seeing a trend move in a downward trend, or to learn from the work that's going well at the sites where we're seeing upward trends, to share that information across all of our campuses. So we do the data review protocol, and then the way we use that data overall is to inform our district, department, and site scorecard strategies. So the data that we're reviewing in the second semester of this year forms the strategies that we will interact and implement for the fall of next school year. We use this data to form our theory of action and problem of practice, both at the TLE level. We plan our strategic actions for every hundred days based on that trend analysis, as well as the current data that we see. So looking at trends, and what do we see right now? The same process is used by our site leaders, and then the TLE team engages in site-specific leadership coaching based on the data that we examine in our data review protocols. Every site is coached by two or three TLE coaches. We collaborate with site leadership teams weekly, bi-weekly, or monthly, and the frequency of that coaching and the types of leadership coaching we're doing within our coaching sessions is driven by the data we've examined, trends, and current state. And with that, I'm going to turn it to Janet Thomas to go over student services. Janet?
Hello, I am Janet Thomas, one of the Directors of Student Services. Jennifer Apodaca and I were happy to develop the student services portion of the superintendent report for you. We received feedback and questions from one board member on the board surveys, so we took that information under advisement in the development of this content. The activities and work of our department is deep and wide, so we tried to capture some priority areas for you. It includes oversight of special education, which you heard about in October, so I won't include that information in this presentation. However, please remember that students with disabilities are represented in the data you will see throughout this presentation, and students with disabilities access all parts of our student services instructional systems. There are three parts of the student services report that I'm sharing with you today. Part one will be identifying and explaining the roles of our student services professionals, including school psychology, social work, counseling, and nursing, and the collaboration with community-based mental health professionals. Part two will be all aspects of social-emotional learning, or SEL, as part of our curriculum renewal and design process and how it relates to student services. And part three, the continuum of school-based mental health services. Where applicable, we will share data and information related to this work, including how we use the data, analysis of the information, and any next steps towards continuous improvement. Since there are other components of the superintendent report beyond student services today, you'll just hear my voice in this part of the presentation to limit the transitions. So let's get started. I will start with describing generally the roles and responsibilities of some of our student services staff. The Student Services Prevention and Wellness Department at the DPI generally recognizes several primary roles within student services included on this slide. I'll start by sharing some of the responsibilities of these professionals based on the role descriptions in our system. To begin, all student services professionals engage in these common activities on the slide in accordance with their role descriptions and the expectations within our school district. When recruiting and interviewing new student services staff, and when interacting with our current student services staff, we lead the conversation with the expectation of equity leadership and a commitment to our changing outcomes for underserved students. Our student services staff are clear on this mission to disrupt inequities and how it aligns within their roles. In addition to the common expectations that I just mentioned, school psychologists serve as the leaders for data literacy analysis, both at the building and district levels. They also play a big role in individual education program or IEP teams through developing, reviewing, evaluating, case managing, and implementing those IEPs. In some cases, they serve as the building-level 504 coordinators, and they collaborate with school and district teams to implement academic and social and emotional behavioral multi-tiered systems of support. Next, school counselors in our district implement a comprehensive school counseling program that addresses academic career and personal social development for all students. They lead and coach the integration of social-emotional learning and academic and career planning, or ACP. They provide leadership for district graduation requirements, including post-high school planning. They facilitate the orientation of new students. School social workers then lead and advocate for children and families in order to promote strong connections to community and school resources, utilizing a wraparound approach. They work to remove barriers, especially those that stem from outside school. They work within multiple systems to provide a continuum of supports. They serve as the lead for our students and families experiencing homelessness through the McKinny-Vento Act, and they also participate in IEP teams through evaluation and implementation processes. In our district, school nurses do many things. Primarily, they establish and maintain a coordinated school health program following professional standards. They monitor and maintain student health records. They develop student health protocols to provide direction to staff around implementation. They identify, assess, plan, and intervene around student health concerns that impact student learning. They participate on IEPs. They implement professional development on health topics, and then they provide training to designated staff regarding medication or performing medical procedures and monitoring students with mental health needs. And then finally, our community-based mental health providers also play a collaborative role within our student-based student services teams. This can look like providing and conducting individual interventions, group, or just as a collaborative member of the school team, providing that mental health knowledge and support. They can serve on crisis teams. They can deliver professional development, and they partner with our student services teams as a wraparound community-based provider, sharing relevant information about shared students or clients. Our current partners in this work are Journey Mental Health Center, Catholic Charities, Insight Counseling and Wellness, and Crossroads Counseling, which I'll talk about a little bit later. Role descriptions capture those key components of each of student services professional roles, but they don't tell the whole story. In addition to the information contained within role descriptions, our student services teams at each school work collaboratively to meet the many needs of students and families with their unique skills, training, and expertise through a team-based approach, which includes each of these roles. They provide direct and indirect services related to social-emotional wellness and academic success. When crises occur in our school district, our student services staff are part of the collaborative teams that mobilize to determine the best course of action for student support. Additionally, our student services professionals work collaboratively across the district and job-alike teams, where they share best practice, do case consultations, and build their capacity together in service to students and families. They also participate in school, district, and community leadership teams. They are called upon in their buildings to lead, collaborate, and consult on a wide range of topics related to their areas of expertise. They are heavily utilized and appreciated. I've just shared with you the people that make up the student services professionals teams. Now I want to remind everyone of the systems that exist in our school district and how student services and social-emotional behavioral supports exist within these systems. There's a lot of content on this slide, but the concept of an equitable multi-level system of support is well-understood in our school district by student services professionals and educators. Some of the work led by student services that I'll highlight in this report can be distributed among these three tiers. Student services staff routinely operate within all three tiers of this model in support of students' social, emotional, and behavioral needs. I'll do a quick overview and reminder of the work within our EMLSS. At Tier 1, universal strategies promote the social and emotional competence, well-being, and development of all students. You can see the types of practices, resources, and strategies that educators implement at the universal Tier 1 level, and student services staff support this work, provide training and consultation, and engage in school-wide planning for all students. At Tier 2, we start narrowing the focus to an identified subset of students. We provide supplemental, targeted, or small-group skill-building support to some of the students in our district. Students receiving these types of supports also have access to the universal Tier 1 teaching practices. Sometimes we partner with outside community agencies to provide these Tier 2 supports. Sometimes our student services staff provide them. At Tier 3, we narrow even further to students who have more intensive needs and when other supports have not met those needs. Students receiving these types of services also all have access to universal Tier 1 teaching practices and Tier 2 supports. At this level of support, schools, students, families, and community agencies and mental health providers may plan together. I'll talk more about this later in the presentation. Additionally, sometimes we need to connect students with appropriate mental health supports outside of the school district. Remember that our student services staff hold school-based licenses that are regulated by the DPI and their professional organizations. We only provide the services that we are trained and qualified to provide in a school setting. School districts and community agencies partners and collaborate in order to have effective referral pathways and a clear understanding of each other's obligations, areas of expertise, and capacity. In this next part of the presentation, I'll be speaking about the four components that make up our social-emotional learning work in Sun Prairie. As part of this content, I will share data that we look at to determine the effectiveness and the impact of the implementation of SEL curriculum and the action steps that we are taking based upon the review of this data. SEL exists universally in our school district as a content area within our curriculum renewal and design process. The information that I'll share with you in the following slides represents one full six-year cycle of that process. We have gone through the cycle, and the committee is now in year one again. We are very proud of this work. It's a great model for the integration of SEL and academics in a school district. The work included under the umbrella of SEL is woven throughout the instructional framework and the named adult expected behaviors and the practice profiles for each element. As I mentioned, SEL is one of the content areas included in the curriculum renewal and design process. As such, it follows the same definition of what curriculum means. In our district, we talk about four legs of the curriculum stool. In the next slide, I'll go a bit deeper into each of these legs of our SEL curriculum. The graphic that you see on the screen is a representation of the SEL work in our district with the four rows representing the four legs of the stool. The first leg is the SEL standards and the integration with academic curricular areas. The cornerstone of this integration are the foundational skills developed in the essential SEL standards. Educators need to know what social, emotional, and behavioral skills we would expect students to be able to know and do at each grade level and as adults. These essential skills were identified early in our committee work based on the DPI SEL competencies. We engaged in a process of unpacking, aligning, and defining a set of eight essential standards in Sun Prairie. This process has been replicated and extended in other content areas, with math and ELA selecting which of these eight essential standards most closely align with the content standards for reporting. We have built our SEL systems and integration off of this strong foundation. The second leg of the stool is the SEL instructional resources, which include curricular materials and/or locally-designed lessons. This is the what. This is what is taught. The first committee cycle identified a universal SEL curriculum, second step, for grades 4K through 8th grade, taught by classroom teachers. These materials also include the bullying prevention units, which are taught by our school counselors. In middle school, it also includes ZELLO lessons, part of our academic and career planning, or ACP, for students related to self-reflection, study skills and habits, career pathways, and more. There was collaboration early between the SEL and ACP committees to identify the specific ZELLO lessons that would best serve our secondary students and their social-emotional learning. Lessons delivered during SP 30 also include other SEL skills and content. The SEL committee reviewed some high school-specific curriculum previously, similar to second step, and recommended instead locally-designed lessons, ZELLO lessons, and SP 30 advisory content. We found that as students advance to high school, they are more likely to actively engage in lessons that relate to their post-high school goals rather than to general SEL lessons. The committee will be reviewing all of these resources as we move through years two and three of the curriculum cycle. The third leg of the stool relates to teacher practices and instructional approaches. This is how the content is taught and generalized. We provide training, coaching, and feedback on the implementation of practices and approaches aligned with responsive classroom developmental designs, restorative practices welcoming schools, and PBIS. These resources provide ample content and guidance for educators to build their toolkits of strategies that foster a culture of care aligned with our instructional framework. The committee will be reviewing these resources in years two and three of the curriculum renewal and design process as well. I do want to emphasize at this time that the two prior slides, Instructional Resources and Teacher Practices, highlighted two separate concepts within our SEL implementation. The teacher instructional practices and approaches shown on this graphic, the tools in the toolkit, can and should happen throughout the school day, whereas the instructional resources to teach curriculum and lessons on the previous slide are used at specific times during the student's school day. The final leg of our curricular stool is the social-emotional behavioral assessments and measures. The committee and others spend extensive time studying and learning about the best practice and the most effective data sources to assess SEL in schools. Best practice indicates that there should be a combination of outcome data and perception data used to assess SEL implementation within a system. The data used in Sun Prairie includes recommendations from the National Organization Castle, or the Collaborative for Academic, Social, and Emotional Learning, and are included in our data playbooks, with the exception of K-8 report card proficiency at this time because it's new this year. We monitor the health of school district systems and the progress towards social-emotional learning standards through these measures. A word about bias. We, along with other professional organizations, including Castle and the DPI, acknowledge that educator bias can influence the way educators observe, perceive, assess, and report students' progress towards social-emotional learning competencies. They advise that factors such as race, ethnicity, gender, identity, socioeconomic status, or cultural differences can affect how students' behaviors are evaluated. This can perpetuate inequities, particularly for students from historically underserved or culturally diverse backgrounds. We approach the assessment of SEV skills with caution. We follow guidance from professional organizations to minimize bias in the following ways. Our equity teams and staff receive training, coaching, and feedback to address biases in instruction and assessment. We use a diverse set of data sources: outcomes, implementation, perception, voices, to balance qualitative and quantitative information for a more balanced view of SEL progress. Calibration tools, like SEL proficiency scales, can create shared language and clear look fours. And then we monitor adult behaviors, data, and trends that help us identify any inequities that may further marginalize specific groups through our continuous improvement cycles. Moving forward, the data that I will speak to in the next section of slides is used in many ways throughout our whole system by all of us in the system. I'm speaking to this data from the perspective of student services today and as it relates to our district work in implementing social-emotional learning and supports through our multi-tiered system. Attendance is one of the measures that we use to monitor the health of many of our school district systems, as I mentioned. This is data that you've seen before in our data playbooks. This is also a dataset that we use to monitor progress towards SEL implementation. Castle, the leading organization that studies and provides guidance on implementation of SEL in schools, indicates that improvements in attendance may be achieved with a robust SEL implementation plan. If we are creating inclusive environments and fostering growth in student confidence in their SEL skills, students will want to come to school. This is our goal. If we are creating inclusive environments and fostering growth in student confidence in their S E L skills, students will want to come to school. This is our goal. As you can see, we have work to do. When analyzing this data at the district level, school level, and individual level, we see an equitable outcomes. For our black and brown students, students with disabilities, multilingual learners, and students living in poverty. We also know that the intersectionality that exists among these groups of students creates even more barriers to accessing school. And sustaining good attendance, and this is where our work lies. So here's what we're doing to improve with our attendance outcomes. Educators are focusing on the fidelity of implementation of our S E L resources and practices so that welcoming communities will be established for all. School leadership teams at the school site then focus on some of these historically underserved students and families. By disaggregating attendance data at that school level and implementing targeted outreach and strategies. Student services staff continue to identify and reduce barriers to access through school-based or community wraparound supports. We've been having district attendance calibration meetings at all level, elementary, middle, and high school. So that we understand policy, procedure, and practices related to attendance efforts. This is still in progress. And then we continue to review and analyze the data to inform continuous improvement and action steps. We also review behavioral data to monitor the health of our school district systems. This is data that you've seen before and is included in our data playbooks. Some behavioral data is used to monitor progress towards S E L implementation. We know that if students are supported in their S E L and well-being, they feel more connected and able to successfully engage in the school community. The information in the data playbooks help us understand the percent of students meeting our expected standard. Of having zero to one behavior incidence. Our use of exclusionary discipline and which students group, which student groups are more at risk for either of these indicators. All of that helps inform our continuous improvement efforts and implementation of our instructional framework. Analysis of this data tells us that black students are overrepresented in all measures as a percentage. And at a higher risk of receiving behavior referrals and exclusionary discipline. Students with disabilities and students living in poverty are overrepresented as a percentage and by risk ratio. To receive exclusionary discipline and Hispanic students and students of two or more race are also at higher risk to receive exclusionary discipline. This data tells us that we need to continue to have educators focus on implementing a culture of care as defined in our instructor instructional framework. School leadership and P B I S teams are focusing on defining, teaching, and acknowledging expected behaviors across school systems. Our student services staff can identify targeted supports for high-risk groups. Our district continues to train, coach, and provide feedback with clear expectations. Around culturally responsive restorative practices and disrupting inequities as defined in our instructional framework. And we continuously review for those improvement actions in our system at all levels. This data set digs a little deeper into referrals for behavior incidents at our elementary level. We monitor the number and type of behavior incidents in our system. At the elementary level, behaviors defined in the elementary handbook when they occur are entered into our student information system, Infinite Campus. Those behaviors are listed on the slide on the left. At the time of this recording, there were one hundred and eighty-five elementary handbook violations documented in Infinite Campus that are aligned with the definitions in the handbook. The top three incidents by code were fighting or physical altercation, two endangering behavior, and three violation of school rules. These three incident codes make up the majority or eighty-three percent of the total documented handbook violations. It's important to note that as our data playbook tells us, the majority of students receive zero to one behavior referrals. So we know and this information confirms that there is a small subset of elementary students receiving the majority of behavior referrals such as these. This tells us that our universal systems are effective. This is also where our tier three and tier two systems are needed. Lastly, the top three actions taken as response to elementary handbook violations are in-school suspension, out-of-school suspension, and restorative practices. Similar to elementary, this data digs a little deeper into referrals for behavior incidents at our six secondary schools. We monitor the number and type of behavior incidents in our system in conjunction with the secondary behavior matrix found in the handbook. At the time of this recording, there were one thousand two hundred and sixty-three behavior incidents documented in I C, Infinite Campus. The top five incidents by code were violation of school rules. Fighting, physical altercation, attendance, skip class, obscene language, and endangering behavior. Those incident codes make up sixty-five percent of the total documented handbook violations at the secondary level. Again, as our data playbooks tell us, the majority of students receive zero to one behavior referrals. So we know and this information confirms that there's a small subset of secondary students receiving the majority of behavioral referrals such as these. This tells us that our universal systems are working and this is where our tier two and tier three practices are implemented. Additionally, the top five actions taken at the secondary level are one, restorative practices. Two, out-of-school suspension. Three, parenting caregiver contact. Four, detention. And five, in-school suspensions. And there's often a combination of those responses. So what do we do with this information? Here is where I'm going to discuss our collective work again, inclusive of student services and in collaboration with Cabinet, T L E. Leadership Collaborative and individual schools. We all play a role in the monitoring, analysis, and responding to behavioral data in our system. I'm just giving voice to our process within our system. Cabinet and others do district level monitoring of some of our behavioral data via S R's, O E's, and score cards. T L E does a regular review of data sets including behavioral data. We identify trends and patterns that help us to make decisions on what and where additional planning or action is needed. T L E Coaching of Site Leaders includes data review and support for site leadership actions to address needs that arise. P B I S teams at each school monitor their overall school behavioral data to analyze trends and inform universal teaching and reinforcement of skills. This may include universal booster lessons from our universal curriculum or more targeted teacher practices. Student services staff and school leaders conduct by face by name analyses. To determine if supplemental or intensive support is needed as shown in the E M L S S triangle from earlier in the presentation. Student support team meetings or S S T meetings may occur to have a deeper conversation that includes the parent and caregiver. And a larger team of school experts to develop a plan of support. Data collection, observation, functional behavioral assessments, interviews, or other strategies may be put in place to gather information and to develop an effective plan of support. In few instances, a special education referral may be made. Behavioral data is included in our ongoing continuous improvement efforts through all tiers in our multi-tiered system of support. So what are some of the identified areas for improvement based on this data and the continuous review of our systems? We'll start with elementary. There are three main areas of continuous improvement related to our elementary behavior incident data and our systems that are in place. First, calibration among adults on the what, when, and how of behavior documentation. We have thousands of students, hundreds of educators, and many administrators, all with different perspectives and biases. We need to continue calibrating on the definition of these behaviors when behaviors rise to the level of a handbook violation and how we are documenting and responding. We have made significant improvements in this area in the last several years, but we still notice discrepancies between and among our elementary schools in our what, when, and how of behavioral documentation. Our second area of improvement, documentation of the behavior incidents that do not rise to the level of a handbook violation. Not every behavior requires documentation in our student information system or infinite campus. It can be very useful as part of our systems review and S E L monitoring to capture the lower-level behavioral mistakes that students make. These behavioral errors or mistakes can be classroom managed in the moment with teaching, reteaching, and reinforcement. It is helpful for schools to develop a system of early warning in order to analyze these low-level errors and implement prevention efforts. We're working on the balance of capturing these instances to help with prevention efforts and not overburdening educators with documentation. Lastly, we need to review the dropdown menu of available codes in Infinite Campus to make sure that they align with the handbook language. We want the language that we use to be consistent between our processes and our documentation system. Regarding secondary, there are also three main areas of continuous improvement regarding or related to the secondary behavioral data. First, the secondary behavior response matrix found in the handbook needs review and potential revision. We are currently working with secondary administrators to identify areas of success and opportunities for improvement with this document. Second, part of the overall review and revision of the behavioral response, behavior response matrix. Is to be more clear about the role of restorative practices and supportive interventions in our response decision-making. As we implement S E L and restorative practices throughout our system, we notice a need for clear communication for educators, administrators, and families about the alternatives to discipline. And or the supportive actions that we take in combination with discipline. And third, we need to make some technical edits to the dropdown menus for both incidents and resolutions in Infinite Campus. Currently, there are some discrepancies between the defined behavior instance and the responses in our matrix and the options that we have to select for documentation in Infinite Campus. After the review and revision or updates to the matrix, technical updates can be done to I C to support consistency and clarity. So moving forward, and as a reminder, we are still talking about that fourth leg of the S E L curriculum stool, assessment and measurement. Now we are pivoting back to some data that exists in our data playbooks. This is data you've seen before. Sabers or Social, Academic, and Emotional Behavior Risk Screener. Is a brief norm-referenced tool for screening students to identify those who are at risk for social, emotional, or S E V problems. Sabers is completed by the classroom teacher in grades K one and two. My Sabers is also completed by students in second grade. There are three domains included in the screening tool that align with S E L competencies, emotional, academic, and social. So we would expect that at least eighty percent of our students would have unlikely risk. Of not demonstrating the S E L skills included in the identified domain. This data tells us that we are generally hovering around that threshold. Between seventy-one percent and eighty-four percent across all domains and windows. Domain score scores that most improved from fall to spring. Our K two teacher-reported scores in the academic domain. Going from seventy-six percent of students meeting the expectations around preparedness, work production, independence, and engagement. To eighty percent of our students meeting the expectations. This tells us that the instructional strategies in place. To build students capacities in this domain are working. Second grade students reported scores in the social domain went from seventy-six percent of students meeting the expectations around cooperation. Problem-solving and social interactions to eighty-one percent meeting expectations. This tells us that second grade students believe that they are gaining these types of skills throughout the school year. Interestingly, the domain consistently below eighty percent expectation is the K two teacher-reported social domain. This tells us that although that subset of second grade students reported improvement in their social behaviors. K two teachers overall for all three grades are reporting more students than we would like. As below the expectation for demonstrating these social behaviors. Finally, the largest dip in progress was the second grade student-reported emotional domain. This tells us that the second grade students were feeling less sure of their coping skills, adaptability, and ability to manage their emotions as the year went on. This data tells us that schools might need to first continue the strategies that we feel are leading to some of those expected outcomes. In some of those domains. Also, school leadership teams including P B I S and student services need to continue to monitor patterns and trends. That may indicate the need for universal booster lessons, for example, the K two social skill development. Also, school leadership teams might need to monitor patterns and trends that indicate grade-specific supports or instructions. For example, second grade targeted supports around emotional regulation strategies. School leaderships and P L Ts analyze discrepancies between second grade student reports and teacher reports to determine any root cause and next steps. And then finally, as always, our continued review and analysis of the data to inform our continuous improvement action steps at all levels in our system. Next, the school perception survey is given to students in grades three through twelve. This data is all student-reported data. In the fall, winter, and spring, it includes questions aligned to the eight essentials S E L standards that I mentioned previously as foundational skills. In the domains of emotional development, self-concept, and social competence. In the spring, there are additional questions related to the instructional framework and to safety and security. We would expect that eighty percent of our students would report positively for demonstrating the S E L skills included in the identified domain. The range of data is between seventy-one percent and ninety-two percent across all domains and windows. At least eighty percent of students report meeting expectations in all domains by the spring. So this tells us that our universal strategies are working to meet the needs of most students. The domain with the lowest percentage of students meeting the expectation is within self-concept and goal-setting during that fall and winter reporting. Domain scores that are most improved from fall to spring are also in that self-concept and goal-setting. So this tells us that we were able to use this data to identify lagging skills in the fall and winter. And support students in building these schools throughout the school year so they were demonstrating growth and proficiency by the spring. This data tells us that we should again continue the strategies that we feel are leading to the expected outcomes. Similar to others, the school leadership teams including P B I S and student services should look at any universal booster lessons that may be needed. For example, that focusing on self-concept and goal-setting and overcoming barriers. School leadership teams including P B I S and student services can use disaggregated data to determine any targeted instruction or supports. And then continued review for continuous improvement. This is the last part of the fourth leg of the stool, S E B Assessment and Measurement. This is the newest monitoring method that you've heard about this year. To support the integration of S E L and academics, the E L A and math committees have reviewed and selected S E L standards that closely align with and support. The academic standards identified in those content areas. K eight report cards will include those S E L standards in the corresponding academic content areas. And teachers will utilize proficiency scales to help assess the skills in their students. This is a new process, so we will monitor this closely and make adjustments as needed. This will help inform parents and caregivers of their students' progress on the S E L reportable standards. To wrap up this section before moving to our final student services content area. I'd like to remind you of the leadership and work of the S E L committee. As I mentioned, S E L has been through one full six-year cycle that resulted in much of the content that I just shared. This school year, we are starting the cycle again. I've shared the progress of our first three meetings of the year in looking back, looking forward, but as a reminder, we have done the following captured on the slide. Our big focus for second semester will be capturing careholder voice through interviews and surveys. The analysis of this information from our students, caregivers, and staff. Will help inform the S E L work for the following years, which may include shifts and adjustments to our implementation plan. And the content that I've just shared. We are excited to continue the work. The final part of the student services portion of this presentation is around school-based mental health. As a related side note to this conversation, you can view the D P I video entitled Why School Mental Health Matters that I participated in last year. That is linked on this slide. The social and emotional well-being of our students, including mental health, is an important topic that receives attention and discussion in our schools, community, and beyond. Given this, it's important for us to understand and define what school-based mental health is and what it is not. The D P I defines school-based mental health as a continuum of services. That promote the social and emotional well-being and positive school culture for all students. This definition aligns closely with all of the information that I've just shared, and we utilize this definite definition as guidance for our work. It is equally important to understand a common misperception that school-based mental health simply means having a therapist or a clinician in our school buildings. Delivering psychotherapeutic services. It is also important to remember that while student services staff, psychs, counselors, social workers are highly trained experts in their fields. They are school-licensed, not licensed, as mental health clinicians. They provide tremendous support to students but are not mental health providers in our school district. We utilize guidance from the D P I to define and implement school-based mental health. Some of the guidance provided by our state's education department is that school-based mental health should prioritize well-being, not solely treating illness. We need to structure a comprehensive approach that is integrated across our school environment, including S E L, which I just discussed in detail. And we need to provide a continuum of. And we need to provide a continuum of supports throughout and within our existing academic and behavior system, including all levels of support. Our social, emotional, behavioral, and school-based mental health work is reflected in our robust equitable multi-level systems of support in the school district and referenced early in this presentation with the triangle graphic. The most intensive school-based mental health programs that we implement in our system support some of the most intensive needs related to social, emotional, behavioral, and mental health challenges. These services would be at the top of the triangle for one to five percent of our student population. Examples of these types of programs include Universal Trauma Screeners and Group Interventions through the REST Program Heart and Bounce Back, Behavioral Health in Schools, Building Bridges, and Esper, or Screening Brief Intervention Referral to Treatment as an Evidence-Based Practice. Please pause for a moment to review the information on this slide. These programs represent successful partnerships with positive impacts for the students and families that they serve. We continue to review and monitor implementation of these programs through quantitative and qualitative data and feedback to inform any necessary changes such as expansions, process improvements, new partnerships, new trainings, et cetera. Sometimes we need to work with students and families to refer them to resources and providers outside of the school district. Students needing additional support outside of the scope of services provided at school can still access all of the supports within our tiered model at school. Sometimes families give us permission to communicate with their outside therapists or supports in order to share information about strategies and progress. Sometimes they don't. Student Services staff understand the process of connecting with families to share concerns, resources, and guidance related to accessing services outside of school and when students are receiving those services outside of school. Within the continuum of school-based mental health services, some activities and strategies on that continuum are best supported by community partnerships. We collaborate closely with Journey Mental Health for implementation of our trauma screening, student consult follow-up, group interventions, and for behavior health in schools. All of these services require coordination of efforts in the presence of Journey therapists in some of our school buildings to implement programs and services. We partner with both Insight Counseling and Wellness and Crossroads Counseling for behavioral real health in schools as well, where some of their therapists are present in our schools. We also partner with Catholic Charities for Building Bridges Program, providing short-term crisis stabilization from our two teams of providers. We partner with the Center for Wisconsin Safe and Healthy Schools, or the WISH Center, to help train and support our staff with MI and Esper implementation. MI is motivational interviewing. I'm not sure that I have said that previously. I also meet with the Sun Prairie Wellness Coalition Directors Katie Peterson and Janelle Rubden-Hill monthly to share updates on the work of the Coalition and the district so we can see where overlap and partnership can occur. They have been, they recently posted a position in the Coalition whose role will partly be a liaison between the Coalition and the district, which will be exciting. We utilize a variety of resources at Sunshine Place and partner with staff and services there to support and connect families to help. Both Jennifer and I have served as steering committee members on the Children's Mental Health Collaborative of Dane County at different times. I attend the WEA Member Benefits Foundation School-Based Mental Health Users Group meetings with district leaders from Wisconsin implementing school-based mental health programming to share resources and ideas. And we are always looking for ways to connect and collaborate with others who do this work in support to students and families. We are grateful to have wonderful partners with a common vision. How can the school board support this work? We always appreciate this question. Thank you. First, it is just helpful to understand that many systems that we have in place to effectively support students and families, both proactively and reactively. When challenges or crises arise, it's important for everyone to understand what is in place to identify and support students and families who need help. Next, it's helpful to continue to cultivate and support the partnerships that we do have, especially right here in Sun Prairie. They provide necessary resources for us to connect students and families to through wraparound supports within the city of Sun Prairie and throughout our local community. There are limitations to what a school district can do to support students and families to overcome barriers, so it's important to seek and cultivate partnerships with community agencies that extend support beyond the scope of the school district. Finally, there are some things that we can all advocate for in our community to reduce barriers for families that impact success at school. Some of those barrier barriers include a lack of affordable housing, lack of public transportation options to navigate around the city to access school events, meetings, and resources in the community, lack of qualified therapists to meet the mental health demands for children and adults in Sun Prairie, limited extended and after-school hours at mental health clinics so students don't have to miss school for appointments. Awareness and efforts to reduce barriers are the primary ways to support some of the work that I've shared today. Finally, from Jennifer and I, thank you for taking time to inquire about and listen to the information that we've shared about our work in Student Services. We look forward to seeing you on January thirteenth.
Thanks, Janet. My name is Bridgette Katarik, and I am the Director of Student Policy and School Operations, and it's my pleasure to share with you some of the key work of this department and my responsibilities as the director. The Director of Student Policy and School Operations position came into existence in July of 2019 and is currently in its sixth year as a cabinet-level position. The Department of Student Policy and School Operations and its director position was created to support the mission and vision of the school district and to ensure effective instruction and student learning can occur in our schools and classrooms each and every day. Supporting the consistent implementation of student policy ensures effective instructional delivery and the sustainability of positive school cultures. Likewise, developing, implementing, and evaluating our school operational policies and procedures assists our entire school system in ensuring all students graduate from high school prepared to continue their education or enter the workforce. There is great variety in the scope of the work that occurs within our department in support of schools on a day-to-day basis. Some of these tasks and responsibilities include problem-solving with schools around complex student discipline or educational issues and coordinating appropriate responses, including any necessary communication in line with the student code of conduct. I also serve as a liaison and problem solver between schools and other Sun Prairie Area School District Departments, and I provide coaching and support to school principals for school operations-related issues. We also coordinate with principals and the director of Facilities and Grounds on school safety training, emergency preparedness drills, and other safety issues. I am involved in mediating both informal and formal complaints at the elementary and secondary levels related to students. I also appropriately process and address elevated parent or caregiver concerns and complaints through the district procedure BDDIR process. And finally, I respond to all other issues concerning operations in all schools, including school-based emergencies not requiring a coordinated district response. These department responsibilities work toward establishing not only operational efficiency of our schools, but also effective implementation of the Sun Prairie instructional framework for the improvement of student learning outcomes. Ultimately, this work helps to resolve situations in a timely fashion, minimizing disruption so that teaching and learning can continue or resume as quickly as possible. Fulfilling these responsibilities also ensures consistency in the application of student policy and procedures outlined in our student handbooks at all levels. Throughout the school year, we provide support in these various ways across district schools as well as the District Support Center. During the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, there were three hundred and thirty-one documented situations in schools that required involvement of or follow-up by the Department of Student Policy and School Operations. This graph was shared with the board this past August and displays the dispersment of these situations by location. Examples of situations in which the department becomes involved include parent or caregiver concerns, bullying, safety concerns, behavior issues, or threats. Similar information and data from this current school year will be shared with the board next August. Today, I would like to highlight three priority leadership areas for you. School safety, student discipline, and student policy. Ensuring the safety and security of students is a top priority for our department and the district each and every day. A comprehensive approach to school safety is essential for providing a learning environment where students can thrive. By implementing effective safety measures, we can mitigate risks, respond to emergencies, and foster a sense of well-being for our students, parents, and staff. Our approach to school safety is framed around four critical and core elements. Prevention, preparation, responding, and recovering. Much of what Janet Thomas just shared and discussed falls into the area of prevention. This includes social and emotional learning, positive behavioral interventions and supports, school-based mental health services and programs, as well as processes for behavioral threat assessment. These systems and services work to build healthy proactive skills and dispositions in our students along with safe and supportive learning environments in our schools. By conducting monthly emergency drills and engaging staff in ongoing safety training, we are preparing staff and students and families with the knowledge and skills necessary for situations that could occur. Throughout the school year, each school conducts monthly fire drills and two tornado drills, as well as two active threat drills in collaboration with the Sun Prairie Police Department. Our school safety planning also involves developing protocols for responding to and managing emergencies such as severe weather situations, medical situations that may require secure holds, or active threats requiring a lockdown or evacuation. A proper emergency response also includes ensuring all students and staff are accounted for and designing the mechanisms to accomplish this. A final critical component is taking into account how we will help students, staff, and families recover after any type of emergency or safety situation occurs. This includes having clear channels of communication prepared to provide timely information, family and student reunification systems outlined, and staff in place ready to provide supportive measures to anyone in need after an emergency or critical situation. One of our primary partners in ensuring our schools are safe and that staff have the necessary skills and preparation is Raptor Technologies. Founded in two thousand and two, Raptor is driven by a mission to protect every child, every school, every day. Sun Prairie entered into its partnership with Raptor Technologies in two thousand and sixteen, and through this partnership, we have been provided the technology as well as the comprehensive training consultation services for both crisis prevention and preparation to respond and recover from emergencies. This software provides us with the capacity to background check visitors and volunteers in our schools, manage monthly safety drills, and account for students and staff in any type of emergency from both desktop and mobile devices. The Department of Student Policy and School Operations also takes ownership of the district's safety and security data dashboard. The Safety and Security Dashboard provides a high-level indication of how well the district is providing a safe environment for students, staff, and community members. The data is used to measure the previous year's safety and security as well as to set goals for the upcoming school year. This information is presented to the board each August and is posted on the district webpage under Safety and Security. In addition to Raptor Technologies, we work with several other community partners, organizations, and resources in support of our school safety efforts. Some of these include the Wisconsin Department of Justice and their Office of School Safety, specifically the use of their Speak Up, Speak Out Anonymous Reporting App. We have also begun to explore their approach and resources for behavioral threat assessment. Members of our department and our school resource officers annually attend the Wisconsin Active Threat Integrated Response Conference and the Wisconsin School Safety Coordinators Association Conference. We also participate in the Dane County Schools Safety Consortium meetings, and most importantly, on a daily basis, we maintain a positive and supportive working relationship with the Sun Prairie Police, Fire, Rescue, and EMS. A second important part of the Department of Student Policy and School Operations is consultative and collaborative problem-solving and planning with school principals around student behavior and discipline. As the Director of Student Policy and School Operations, I am typically contacted by school principals when their own prior strategies around student behavior have not resulted in the outcomes they were seeking, or if a behavior is of a more significant nature in which a more formal or higher-stakes approach, such as a pre-expulsion agreement, expulsion-of-bayants agreement, or expulsion itself is being considered or warranted, given the specifics of the situation. A pre-expulsion agreement is a formal agreement with a student to follow behavior expectations with corresponding conditions. It is most appropriate when a student has had a significant level three or a lower level four infraction, and this agreement could be implemented at the building level or district level, but always with the involvement of the Director of Student School Operations. If conditions are not violated, the outcome could be a consideration for expulsion. An expulsion-of-bayants agreement is a formal legal contract to avoid an expulsion recommendation by the student agreeing to a set of conditions, and these conditions could include an alternative learning environment. It's only used when a significant level four behavior has occurred and an expulsion recommendation could have been considered. It must be implemented at the district level in conjunction with myself as the Director of School Operations. It can trigger a recommendation for expulsion if a student violates any of the conditions outlined in the agreement. And finally, expulsion refers to the long-term or permanent removal of a student from a school district, and unlike suspension, requires action by the school board. It's only used when a significant level four behavior has occurred and is implemented by the Director of School Operations in conjunction with school administration. A student who has been expelled is expelled from public schools in Wisconsin if the hearing officer or school board determines that the interest of the district requires it. This slide shows the number of pre-expulsion and expulsion-of-bayants agreements we have in place currently, along with the number that were in place over the past four school years. It also displays the number of students expelled during each of those same school years. As you can see, we've needed to put fewer of these agreements in place during this current year and last year as compared to the twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-two, twenty-three school years. Here, we've broken down our student expulsion data from two thousand and twenty, twenty-one to the present by reason for expulsion and a student's educational status. As you can see, the primary reasons for student expulsions have included level four weapon, battery, terrorist threat, and drug offenses, with physical battery being the most common reason we have recommended and move forward with expulsion. A less common reason for expulsion has been repeated refusal or neglect to obey school rules. As we support students who have been expelled, we also track and monitor their educational status to have a clear understanding of their educational outcome post expulsion. This chart illustrates those pathways and statuses over the past several years. This fall, we have started conversations related to educational options that we can offer to students during the early term of their expulsion, prior to full-time reinstatement to a virtual program or physical school building. This would provide expelled students with some education, access to educational services rather than a complete disconnection from education altogether. A final key element of the work of our department involves the administration and implementation of key district policies. As we provide consultative and collaborative support to school principals and respond to student behavioral situations, we work together to ensure consistent application of any policy. The policies listed here are a few of the most commonly applied student-related policies. The policies listed here are a few of the most commonly applied student-related policies that we reference as a resource and guide to our work of supporting students and families. These include District Policy J B and District Procedure J B R, which is Student Discrimination and Arasment, District Policy J B A, which is bullying, cyberbullying and hazing, District Policy J G and District Procedure J G R, which is discipline, suspensions and expulsions of students, and finally, District Policy A C, nondiscrimination in district programs, activities and operations. As the Director of Student Policy and School Operations, I hold a formal role in the administration of District Policy B D D I and District Procedure B D D I R, Public Concerns and Complaints. As outlined in this district policy, citizens, parents or caregivers who are dissatisfied with the results of earlier attempts to resolve their concerns may submit a written complaint to myself as Director of Student Policy and School Operations as step three of the formal concern and complaint process outlined in the district procedure. After reviewing the situation and gathering additional information, I develop a written determination in response to the concern or complaint. This decision can be appealed to the school board as step four in the complaint process as outlined in the procedures. We greatly appreciate your ongoing interest and support for our work, and we appreciate your time and thoughtful reflection on the work of our team. I look forward to answering any questions you may have on the thirteenth about not only the content of this presentation, but any other department-related responsibilities. Thank you.
Thank you, Bridget. The suggested outline from the school board for this report had three additional topics for us to share. This slide reflects data from our staff reporting how they feel as a member of our overall school community and how they self-report about building relationships and community with our students. With respect to financial investments, there are many positions in our system that have a work stream supporting appropriate behavior. That includes all administrators, all student services staff, restorative justice coaches and liaisons, and all professional educator. The positions outlined in this slide are tied more explicitly to student behavior. Throughout the presentation, Janet and Bridget indicated ways the school board could support our work, and I'll close out with a few final thoughts. Most importantly, I want to express gratitude to our school board and to our entire community for supporting our most recent referendum, which will maintain staffing and programming. A focus on increasing the salary of our professional educators helps us remain competitive in Dane County. Staff retention is a key factor in building strong communities and maintaining behavior conducive to learning in the classroom. Please continue to advocate and support high levels of compensation and benefits for all of our staff. Please continue to maintain the focus and integrity of the instructional framework and its execution in our system as our highest confidence strategy to disrupt inequitable outcomes. Please continue to limit distractions that pull time, energy and resources away from our deep implementation in support of changing outcomes for all students. And please continue to advocate for transportation across our overall community to support innovative off-site programming for each student. Thank you again for taking the time to review this presentation. We look forward to answering any questions you might have when we see you at the board meeting on January thirteenth. Thank you.